I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. If you're at home listening or by Zoom, welcome. Is there anyone here for public input? Or is there anyone on the phone?
There are some on the phone, yes.
Anybody for public input? Anyone, public input? All right, hearing none. Review and approve consul agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve firefighter appointments. Item B, approve temporary gambling permit for Church of St. Joseph. Item C, approve eight-three-twenty city council meeting minutes. And item D, approve eight-seventeen-twenty city council meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
I would like to pull C.
Do you, Frank, you want to amend yours to A, B, and D?
I will do that.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And I think-
The only reason why I wasn't here, so I have to abstain from that.
I'll, I'll move to approve item C.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and abstained.
Yep.
All right. Item six, regular agenda. Item A, variance request, St. Cloud Engraving Building redevelopment at four-twenty Third Street North. John?
We could toggle over to the screen. Thank you. This variance request is from Michelle Meyer, who would be the applicant and proposed purchaser of the property. Jeff and Jill Wade Tashik and St. Cloud Engraving Inc. as a property owner for variances from ordinance section fifty-two-point-four-two regarding required number of parking stalls and parking stall dimensions and driveline width. And from city ordinance section five-two-point-two-seven to forego required landscaping buffer in a B-two district where it abuts a residential district. Residential district in this case located just to the south. This property is most recently utilized as St. Cloud Engraving, but has been marketed for several years. The proposal calls for the footprint of the building to stay in its current configuration while the interior would be renovated, updated to a hair salon business. I'll put the site plan on the screen here. The proposed hair studio has a higher parking demand than the previous St. Cloud Engraving business. And the existing prop- parking on the property located in the front off of Third Street does not meet the current demand. It was considered grandfathered or legally non-conforming. In fact, the southern parcel was purchased some time ago by the current owners with the intent that it would be needed to fulfill parking demand for potential future use for the building. So they are planning ahead in that case. The parking demand for the property, based on the square footage, would be twenty stalls. And the proposed revisions would include parking for eighteen vehicles, which is two stalls short of the requirement. While there are the three stalls existing in front of the building, the applicants have been upfront about their desire to remove the parking in that area with the intent of adding some potential future outdoor seating or landscape improvements as part of the business in the future. And they wouldn't want to have to rely on those stalls. I would note that this, this property is a little bit unique among those in the city in that it does have some adjacent on-street diagonal public parking available on Fifth Avenue, which realistically right now only serves the library in this property, even though on-street parking can't be formally counted toward the parking requirement. Realistically, it would reduce the, the practical demand on the parking lot. So we can't count it, but those stalls could certainly be used for day-to-day parking operations, same as for the library or any other nearby business. Several of the variances being requested are actually being made at the city's behest in coordinating with the, with the applicants with the intent of facilitating snow removal from the adjacent alley and snow storage from the alley plowing. This includes foregoing the requirement for landscape buffering on the southern end of the parking lot and provision of a, at least a three-foot area between the alley and the parking lot to allow for snow to be cast off the alley during plowing. Landscaping would typically be required under ordinance in this area, but my recommendation would be to not require it, but allow it to be put in at the owner's discretion. We noted during our review as part of the design process and working with the applicant and their design team that between the snow coming off the alley and the salt associated with that, it's likely to be pretty hard on plants or any fence there, or both. We deal with that pretty frequently with those tight spaces and the fence is getting beat up. Again, we typically require landscape buffering for new and redevelopments where the commercial abuts residential areas. But in this case, the proposed business, given its nature, is pretty quiet, pretty low impact, primarily business during the daytime hours with nominal impact of vehicle noise and headlights on the single adjacent residential property to the south. I don't have any concerns with foregoing the requirement for screening in this instance, and we have not had any objections. Additionally, we have identified that the refuse enclosure would be in front of the building, which would also limit noise from the refuse collection from impacting adjacent residences, which can be an issue in areas where we have that kind of meeting, meeting in the middle between residential and commercial areas. The last variance being requested is for a minor reduction to the minimum parking lot stall depth and driveline width. Again, this was at the city's request. This was the preferred layout that our staff kind of came up with in collaboration with their design team to allow for that snow, snow deposit for alley plowing to minimize impacts on the parking stall availability and the parked vehicles. What we're requesting is the stall depth to be very nominally reduced to seventeen foot four inches instead of the minimum seventeen foot six inches, two inches difference. And the proposed two-way driveline width to be allowed at twenty-four feet instead of the standard twenty-six foot. Given the, the small size of the parking lot, this isn't going to be a high-speed raceway of a parking lot. Most of the vehicles utilized in this business are probably going to be standard cars, small trucks. Not necessarily going to see a lot of big vehicles here, so I don't have any concerns with allowing a little bit smaller driveline than usual. I'm supportive of these variance requests and believe that they have demonstrated practical difficulties in adhering to the current standards of the ordinance and proposing reuse of a previous existing structure with limited availability for parking. Again, portions of this request are being driven by the city's desire to ensure proper plowing operation of the adjacent alley as well. The planning commission reviewed this request last week at their meeting and recommended approval of the, of the request. We did have feedback from the adjacent property owner to the south. They've had a couple of questions, but no concerns with the request. Just wanted some clarifications on some things. In my opinion, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to other uses already existing. This is a good reuse of a long-vaked property. And I would recommend approval of the variance with the following two conditions. Number one, a snow storage area or plan on private parking lot must be identified and utilized as approved per planning and community development director. And they have acknowledged the snow storage area shaded. This area right here. That just gives us an idea where if we get a heavy snowfall season, they're going to put snow until it can be removed or if needed. And number two, the city assumes no liability or responsibility for any damage to fencing or landscaping the applicant may choose to undertake within the southern parking setback adjacent to the alley. Applicant is advised that snow removal from the alley and associated road salt often negatively impacts fences and plantings. Those are my recommendations. I can close my report and open it up for any questions.
All right, consul, any questions?
How large of a salon facility, or how many people can they?
Ten chairs. So there, there would be the ten stylists at any, at any potential time. That's, that's the applicant's goal.
How many?
Ten, ten stylists or-
Ten at a time?
Yep, ten, ten people operating in there at a maximum. Even though the, it's pretty common for ordinances for cities to have parking stalls for salons based on the number of chairs. But ours does not. It, it only goes by the square footage of the facility. So at, you know, eighteen stalls, you'd be a little bit shy of two per chair, which would be basically a client and a stylist.
Trying to figure out is if you have ten stylists, you have ten people and thirty stalls. And this is going to be how many?
It would, eighteen stalls total on the property, and there's additional five diagonal. But we can't, we don't count those formally because they're, they're available for use, just like with, with anyone else. But I, I don't think it's necessarily, you know. I don't know if that's realistic, that there'd always be, you know, ten, ten stylists, ten clients, and ten people waiting at any given time. That's a peak. That could certainly happen with like a wedding or a, say, a prom when things get back to normal. But, yeah, that, that would be the, the calculation based on our parking requirement is what we go by. And that, that would be twenty stalls for a facility this size on a square footage.
Give her to the east. According to the picture here, it looks like that needs to be cleaned up. Or are they going to work with that problem there or?
I'm, I'm ongoing with that with the city, with the city attorney. We have got some cars out of there, but that's still in progress. We did put it as an option that when things do get cleaned up, they could always opt to lease stalls from them as well because the ordinance does allow for, you can lease stalls from an adjacent property owner within three hundred feet. If, if there's a demand for that. That was kind of a worst-case scenario. We had seen several iterations of this plan, you know, including alley access and things that might have gotten a couple more stalls, but they, they weren't the best flow. You know, if you're bringing people off the alley, that's just going to create additional issues with traffic, you know, for the residences that are to the south there. So we decided that wasn't the ideal. So I'll give credit to their design team. There's a lot of back and forth on this.
I mean, we're having an ongoing problem there and it doesn't seem to get any bitter. And I'm glad this person took the step to put that in there. I think we have to step up on our side so that the neighbor is more cooperating.
Yep, I'll, I'll acknowledge that, but that's, that's also a separate issue from this specific request.
Any other questions on the beauty salon, hair salon? Better watch.
Yeah.
Any other que-
I'd make a motion to approve.
Accept the variance with the recommendation, recommended actions?
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, John. All right, item B, twenty-twenty-one rural tax rates.
So what you have before you is a recommendation to leave the twenty-twenty-one rural tax rates as they are. So there would be no change, just given circumstances. Typically, if you recall, what we do is we take last year's tax information, what ours increased, our, our regular rate, and that's what we do for that percentage for that. And so just given the circumstances this year, that is not being recommended. But you have the ultimate authority to be able to choose to, to make your decisions if you want to do that same increase. We have done that over the years. And so just also for those in the audience, we do have some rural tax rates. So it's many of our newly annexed areas that don't have all of the benefits of water and sewer and all of those other city services that we have left them at their tax rate, and they've increased at the same rate as the city's tax rate over the years. So that's why there's multiple different tax rates that you see ahead of you. So the recommendation is for all of them to remain the same.
But this is tax rates that I paid on already this year. And we can't adopt these tax rates next year, can we? So once we turn this down, we can't say bring it back and add, and add the tax rate.
You could choose to do that. You can do that. You set the tax rate every year. So for this year, if you want to leave it at the same, so that it doesn't, there's no increase, next year you could look at making that increase if things go back to normal from that and have that be plain ketchup. That's entirely up to you.
It could be deferred. A lot of the, a lot of the tax breaks we're talking about in federal government right now are deferred.
Yeah.
So then-
No, I'm just saying, I'm paying taxes already at a higher rate, but they're not, nor will they next year.
Right, but you, that is true. But next year you could choose to make, see, if, if you look at what we're planning on doing with the city's tax rate this year of keeping it-
Even.
Flat, yep. And that's what we're recommending to do with the rural tax rate for this year.
But that tax rate would be in effect next year, the flat rate.
It would be for this coming year, just like on twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, but there's always the legs that you're behind.
We use the last year's tax rate to determine this one for the next year, yes. But what I'm saying is, is that next year you could choose to go back and give them the same increase that they received so that you don't have it for two years.
Alls I'm saying is if we don't, it's kind of not fair.
What do you mean not fair?
Because we raised them rates on the city part of Wake Park. We paid them taxes already. We, that's, these are last year's tax rates that we implement.
We use last year's tax rate to determine the twenty-twenty-one, so rural tax rate for these rural tax rates, yes.
Yes.
We're making the recommendation for just to leave it flat.
For one year.
For one year. Next year you can adjust it back if you want to. You could take what it would be proposed for this year and do it for next year.
I thought-
But you don't need to determine that this year.
Are the rural tax rates on a graduated scale, however?
They increase, yeah, they're all different, right? So it depends on when they came into the city. And they're, each one of them increased at the same percentage as what our tax rate was the prior year. Okay, so what our tax rate was for twenty-twenty, normally what we would be looking at for twenty-twenty-one for the rural tax rate would be what was our percentage increase from twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty? Whatever that number was, that's what the rural tax rates percentage would go up for twenty-one, for twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, that, that timeframe, okay? So what we're recommending this year, given the circumstances, is just to leave it flat. You can choose to do the same thing. Next year you'll have the option of adjusting that. You could choose at your dis- it's at your discretion. You could choose to have that, that percentage increase be the exact same as ours. They could have, they could be paying the same tax rate as ours. We've chosen to do it this way.
Rural tax rate increase this year.
That's proposed for twenty-twenty-one.
Right.
But we look back at last year's.
Last year, we raised the property taxes.
Thirty percent increase or something.
That's what would be normally recommended for twenty-twenty-one.
And now you would implement that, that raise right now. That's what this is about.
For the rural tax rates, that's right.
So we're really potentially like double delaying any rates increases on the rural. Because this is last year's tax rate.
I, I, I-
It's what we do every, yeah, I don't, I know, I kind of understand what you're saying, but-
It's going to be two years-
This is the year they're going to pay it.
It's going to be two years before the, the property tax rates would be increased.
Yeah, I think I'm reading Frank is we increased three percent last year.
Right. That's what theirs should be.
This year we're increasing zero. They didn't get that three percent increase.
Until, until the following.
Until, till this year.
And this year would be the year that they would get the three percent.
Normally, they would get the three percent.
That's right.
Yep.
That is correct. The recommendation from Keith is to leave it at zero, but it is entirely up to you.
And, and understand, this is a deferred type thing. I mean, next year we could add to three percent. Let's, let's say the state, the city goes to zero percent, then next year we would add a zero percent to theirs.
Yep.
Next year, next year we can-
Then it would be an automatic zero.
Next year we can add the-
An automatic, because you guys have proven it.
No, next year we could add the three percent.
That's correct. That's what-
I'm saying that out loud, so everybody keeps that in their mind.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm-
What's going on here?
Yes.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's right. It's a deferred tax.
While we taxed everybody already at that percentage of increase, but we will not for-
Why don't we want it, why do we want to defer the tax?
COVID.
It's, it's entirely up to you. The recommendation was that you do that, but you could choose to do what last year's rate.
And the budget's been formed with these already tabulated into the budget, so we're not short, so to speak.
No.
With the twenty-twenty-one budget.
I'd just like to make everybody even. That's why I say it out loud.
I'm just wondering why we want to pay more taxes and allow them not to pay the taxes, the same tax.
They are paying it. They are paying the taxes. They are still paying taxes.
No, I didn't say, why we're paying an increased rate, but they're not paying an increased rate? Why do we pay more? Because we live in town and they're not paying an increased rate?
This happened, this, I mean, this happened because of COVID. There's no way, there's no, if, if we were, if we were back last year, this would be an automatic. We would have been done with this five minutes ago. We would have said, move to approve, fucking go, and it's gone. I mean, so it, it's because of COVID. It, it's, how many of these people lost their jobs? I don't know. Maybe none of them. Maybe they're all millionaires sitting out there and they don't have to worry about it. But I think a lot of them lost their jobs and, and so we're giving them a break. And that's what we're doing with our citizens this year, which, as Frank says, it's we're a year behind on.
That's really not logical, because there are people in town having to pay taxes. They lost their jobs too.
And your tax rate this year is proposed to be flat.
But this year our tax rate for them is zero.
Our tax rate is zero.
We're hoping to do a zero.
Not zero. It's just, it's, it's flat.
It's flat.
And I think it's the levy that you got to make sure, because there's other things that can impact what people pay on property taxes.
Yeah, school districts and everything.
Levy.
Alls I'm saying out loud is next year the rural tax rate could go up while people who live in the city could stay flat.
You are so smart.
Well, I-
That's right.
We're not treating everybody equal here.
No.
Not everybody's paying the same increase.
Graduated.
They aren't any year.
Scale, right. Aren't we, or most of the over?
That's different.
But there's no increase.
That's not the tax rate.
Where I had an increase. They are not receiving an increase.
You're not proposed to get an increase for twenty-twenty-one. I know, I know.
I'm not talking about twenty-twenty-one. I'm talking about twenty-twenty.
They did get an increase in twenty-twenty, but it was based off of twenty-nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're always, yeah.
We're falling behind.
They're always going to be a year behind because you have to set that. That's how we-
And now it's going to be two years behind.
Oh, can I make a motion?
Yeah.
You can.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve naming the twenty-twenty-one rural tax rate as indicated here on the forum I'm looking at.
I'll second that.
So what was the motion?
To approve, to approve-
The way it's written.
The tax rates as the same rate as, as last year.
Okay.
Without the three percent, which, which should be-
Twenty-twenty-one rural tax rates.
To remember that the next year-
Yes.
Ours didn't go up and theirs, theirs didn't either, but they should have had a three percent.
Yes.
Who's second?
I want to be that clarified, especially next year, I think.
No, you made the motion.
Can't.
So next year, I think that needs to be added into this information.
Okay.
So everybody's clear what's going on here?
Yep. Further discussion.
Well noted, Frank.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed. All right. Item C, approve fund transfers.
My account?
Your account, yeah.
I didn't hear that, but-
I got just a part of it, so yeah.
This is something that we do every year as part of this process. And it's a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar and a hundred-and-seventy-three, three-twenty-seven-fifty needed to move money from the local sales tax fund to the debt service to pay for our projects.
So move.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item D, twenty-twenty-one general fund preliminary budget, preliminary levy and revised levy.
Okay, I just got to get to the right one, sorry. Sometimes when you're doing this.
I just have one kind of quick question on it. After our session, was that amount of money removed from this?
Yep.
Or did it drop down or stay the same?
No, it, we, we removed that, we moved a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars out of it. Yeah, I'm just looking for my agenda item. I don't see.
Oh, I thought, I assumed we were just going to do that at the next budget work session, but-
It just, we just took the amount out.
Oh, not where it's coming from.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have some ideas of recommendations of where it should come from, but, so I'm looking for my staff report.
Want to go through your spiel, or should we just approve it?
Just approve it.
Go ahead and approve it.
I'm moving to approve it.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
I have to read the, that, there's a public hearing that's going to be set. That's my only part and I'm-
That'd be part of discussion.
Yeah. Okay, sorry.
Here's a re-
Yeah, I don't see it.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth.
Has a resolution adopted a revised preliminary budget.
Public, the public hearing, um, December seventh. Um, and a continuation if needed on the fourteenth.
Oh, yeah, right here. City council will hold a public hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-one proposed budget and tax levy on Monday, December seventh, twenty-twenty, at the Wake Park City Hall, beginning at six forty-five P M.
Perfect. Thank you.
If a continuation hearing is necessary, it will be held on Monday, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty, at the Wake Park City Hall, beginning at six thirty P M. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
Um.
I think Mike and, who seconded? Frank.
Sorry, when I'm wearing dual hats, I can't keep up sometimes, so I appreciate you.
All right. Item E, approve administrative staff positions and hiring process.
Um, so we have had, um, our administrative associate in our office has decided to, she resigned her position effective nine-eighteen. Um, and then as a result of that, uh, what we have done is kind of taken an opportunity to look at the job duties for that particular position and then the other positions within the office. Um, and so looking at that, um, we also looked at the eligibility list for that pretend, that particular position. It has expired. Um, in, in discussion with our staff, uh, we felt that it would be an opportunity for us to maybe reevaluate that administrative associate take off the licensing pieces of that, which are, there's quite a few steps in, in the process and it's sometimes can be very difficult and problematic with a lot of the interruptions that go on up front. And so the recommendation that I have is to create a, what I'm calling an administrative secretary position that would then take those licensing pieces out, put that in with our A P A, our clerk, um, and then, um, giving that- um, and then, um, giving that person some additional, um, time to be able to spend providing some assistance to me. And so there's a couple of different steps to get to that point. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I'm kind of going through it quickly.
There's three motions and we'll go through them each.
Yeah, so it would require you, um, to revise the two job descriptions. The administrative secretary would go down from a pay grade four to a pay grade three. And then we would have to add the licensing plea, piece of the job description into the accounts payable receivable clerk, which would move hers from a four to a five. And then you'd actually have to point that person to that job and then authorize the beginning of the hiring process. So that's a lot, I know, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Because of, because of the up and down, it is, uh, neutral for pay.
It is.
A dollar's a dollar. It just went split a little different, so. Any other questions for Shauna? Otherwise, we can start going through these motions.
So what's the increase of that one that you upgraded?
Yeah, it's taking on all of the licensing, so that one takes.
Dollar amount.
Dollar.
Oh, the di- it really doesn't, because it goes into, she just moved, gets moved closer to her, from where she is now. She just gets, she gets one additional step on the step system, so she gets into a step seven, so there's one more step. I don't have the specific dollar amount.
Fifty cents or a dollar or whatever.
It's very nominal.
And the other job would go, come down that much?
Mm-hmm, yes, yep.
So if there's nothing else right now, I need a motion to approve, uh, the job descriptions.
First one is to move to approve the administrative secretary job description.
And accounts payable.
And, and.
You could do them as.
We could do them together.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll just keep going. And second, how come it reads wrong? Doesn't.
As I wrote, I.
Move the accounts payable receivable licensing, oh, we're just approving both job descriptions.
Yep, just the job descriptions right now, Frank.
Move to approve the secretary, the administrative secretary job description and accounts payable receivable licensing clerk job description.
There you go.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. The next one, Frank, is to approve.
Move to approve appointing the accounts payable receivable clerk to the accounts payable receivable licensing clerk position and move this position from a pay grade four max to a pay grade five step seven.
Do I have to approve that or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're actually moving her from one, that, uh, that's the actual person. The first one was the job description change.
Further discussion.
So that was Ken and?
Me.
Oh, Frank, I meant, sorry. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. And then the third one is the hiring process for the administrative secretary.
Move to approve.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, prove bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, bills are paid. I don't have anything. Shauna, do you have anything?
I don't, not that I can think of.
At this time, we are not going to adjourn our meeting. We are going to close our meeting for a, uh, the agenda item is evaluation of performance of a city of Wake Park employee under Minnesota statute, section thirteen D dot zero five subdivision three clause A. The employee is Jason Thompson. Mr. Thompson received written notice of this meeting. So now I will entertain a motion to close the, the regular meeting.
Move to close the meeting?
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, meet, uh, close, the.